It's six oh two, Yam and I am going to call being to order if you will please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Says in Proverbs eight, by me kings reign and rulers decree what is just, by me princes rule and nobles, all who govern justly. I love those who love me, and those who seek me diligently find me. Let's pray. Thank you, Lord, for all our civil servants. Thank you for their hard work and their sacrifice. May you continually bless them. May you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to skillfully govern the people of our city. Give the mayor, the city leaders, staff, and council wisdom so that they may solve problems, distinguish between right and wrong, and bring order, stability, and prosperity to our city. God of peace, we invite you to preside over this council meeting, even if there are differences of opinions. Give a spirit of unity. Grant your wisdom to each of the council members so that they work as a unified team in combining ideas for a great outcome. May they have a spirit of camaraderie in this meeting and work together as they serve our city Allen Park. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Hunt. We have the roll call, please.
Councilman Lally.
Here.
Councilman Schlack.
President.
Councilman Valerius.
Here.
Councilman Lloyd.
Here.
Pro Tem Lally.
Here.
And Mayor McCloud.
Here.
We have a form, Mayor.
Thank you. And I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
I made a motion, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Lally.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion, ma'am.
From the meeting of November twenty-third. Motion by Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any corrections? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And we are going to take a moment of silence in memory of Councilwoman Pamela Syke, who left us a week ago Friday after a long battle with pancreatic cancer. And at this time, we're going to deviate somewhat from our normal procedure, and we'll take council comments related to Mrs. Syke, and we'll start with Mr. Valerius.
Thank you, Mayor. For the second time since the election in November twenty nineteen, we mourned the loss of another city council member. I've moved seats twice now, and I would have rather just stayed where I began. Every member of this council was newly elected in twenty nineteen, and the six of us ran because we love and care about Allen Park. The loss of two amazing, dedicated individuals willing to serve the city and its citizens is both tragic. And their loss will bear on us for the remainder of our terms. There is some joy in the fact that we were able to serve with them and know them as dedicated people who were willing to serve Allen Park and the citizens of this city. Know that the individuals sitting here today continue to serve Allen Park and truly care about this city and the people who call Allen Park home. Pam was an amazing, intelligent, and dedicated woman. Her knowledge and willingness to serve others will be dearly missed. She was an advocate for women and served the city of Allen Park throughout her illness. She was an inspiration and will be deeply missed. As was the case in January of twenty twenty when Charles Blevins joined the city council at the passing of Bob Stites, today we will welcome Dennis Marcos to serve this city as a councilman. Dennis proved his willingness to serve Allen Park when he ran in the twenty nineteen election, and I'm confident that he will continue to serve in the best interest of the cities, citizens of the city moving forward. With that, I yield.
There's a saying that leadership is sitting, is planting trees that you'll never sit under. And I feel very confident that the work that Pam has done in the last two years on this council and through a lifetime of service will continue to benefit generations of not only Allen Parkers but in the various communities that she has served. Through my relationship with Pam, we didn't always agree. In fact, we actually disagreed quite often. And I, in those conversations, and they were always conversations, they were never arguments, in those conversations, Pam always stuck to her point. She made it clearly. She made it using fact and logic. And even if we disagreed, still didn't come to an agreement at the end, we respected each other afterwards. And through those conversations, I know that I grew as a member of this council as a person. Every conversation I had with her made me a, not just a better member of council, but a better person. She has made me a better version of myself, as I'm sure that she has done with countless other people who have, who were touched by her in her time here. And I also welcome Mr. Marcos to join us up here, and I'm confident that he will do a great job. But I do know that we are poor as a city having lost Pam because she was such a diligent and intelligent individual. And every time I come and sit at this dais, I will very much miss her. But I do know that she has planted many trees that we will be enjoying for a great number of time.
I was deeply saddened when I heard that Councilwoman Pam Syke passed away. Pam was such a wonderful and caring and brilliant human being and will be profoundly missed in this council. May she rest in eternal peace. My family and I send our deepest sympathy to her entire family and all of her friends. We will keep all of them in our prayers. Thank you.
I want to start off by showing this little pin. Normally, we wear one on a pal pin. Shortly before or after we got a council, I lost the backing. And I was like, oh crap, I don't know what to do. And I was like, oh, don't worry, I've got a pin for you. So she comes back and brings me this little sharpener. I was like, what am I going to do with that? She's like, I'll use the back of the pin. So, a little simple flag, but one that I wear in her honor today. To her husband Rich and daughter Sarah, I want to express to you in a few words and thoughts what I felt last week as I mourned, as we all mourned the passing of your beautiful wife and mother. Two short years ago, to the day Pam's passing, Pam and I, along with others on the stage for dais, stood here. These very chambers and sports performed the duties of city councilperson to the best of ability. So help me God. And Pam, as I look back, you did. In front of the city dais, you did. In our legal affair committee meetings, you did. Out in the community, you did. Pam, I didn't know you long before that. In fact, I remember on election night, you admitted to me that before that very day, you hoped I might lose, but changed your mind as you got to know me. Got to know my wife Bridgette as we passed back and forth, handing literature out in front of the community center to citizens, joking with each other for the first time, and even sharing stories about our past and how, if we are elected, we'll be able to do pretty great things. Later that night, Pam and I had one. We embraced with a friendly hug and remember her saying, well, we won. I guess that means we officially can be friends. I laughed. This was after a few joyous beers, so I was a little red in the face, and I said, you know it, friend. It was then over the next two years, from swearing in to the sad passing Councilman Bob Stites, start of COVID nineteen pandemic, Pam's diagnosis, till her passing, we got to know each other pretty well. We talked for hours about the city, our families, our histories, and how we were going to continue to try to do great things once this pandemic is over and during throughout the pandemic. Oftentimes, we would go out for dinner after council meetings to have another cold beer, order many tacos, sometimes two, talking about what Rich bought when he and Pam would go antiquing, how Sarah was nervous about teaching art online during the start of the pandemic, not sure how that was going to be possible, or how my son Gary Junior and my wife Bridgette would have intense baby mother stare downs till snot would pour out of his face, pure baby laughter. It might be silly to talk about, but I enjoyed those talks. She would share a lot of great advice about being a parent, advice that I'm happy to have heard now. It was exciting, and for a long time, you beat the odds. I knew you would. You were a person with a heart of gold that treated my family oftentimes better than some members of my own family. When I told Pam I was going to have a second son, Pam said to me, Gary, I just hope I can hold him. I said, Pam, don't worry. And she did. When we talked about the future of DPS building, Pam said to me, Gary, make sure my name is going to be on that building. I said, Pam, well, of course it's going to be on that building. We're going to need an engineer to make sure the names are straight. And they were, and her name is on that building. Pam, I will hold the memories of you in my heart forever, kindness you shared, comfort you showed, the love you brought into the lives of my family and I. And though it was only two short years, we became true friends. Friends like that never leave your heart, even if they leave your life for a while, even after years. When we return together in the heavens, we will pick up that conversation that we last had and begin again.
Okay, try to get through this. I've known Pam since high school, from her daughter Sarah and Richard, and my condolences to those two. Dennis, I understand how you're going through right now. Such, when Bob Stites passed away, it really hit me at the last meeting when sitting here and didn't see her there. There's so much I could say about Pam. Mother, daughter, wife, the honorable Councilwoman Syke. We used to always joke about her last name because sometimes we couldn't, like, people didn't know how to pronounce it. I'm just like, you just go, Syke, you know. When we ran, I remember for office, we did this together, and we ended it together because last week she was here, and I'll remember, and Jill told me to walk her out. We went to Ramsworn, had like an hour or two conversation about the future, even though I knew, it's... When we ran for office, everyone knew that me and her were like a tag team, even though the amount of times we used to fight and argue about little things and all that stuff, going to her house on the porch and talking about the last council meeting or how it go and all that stuff. But through the laughs and cries and the arguments, at the end of the day, we always respected one another. It's, it just... It's the memories you got to keep close to your heart, and she will always be missed. And I, it's like, I will never forget her, and I hope she's not suffering anymore. And with that, I yield.
I would have preferred this be at the end. I too didn't meet Pam until a couple of years ago. Our first interaction was a park build at Humpty Dumpty. And she and I slog through the whole day. It was cold and wet and raining, but we got dirt pulled out and dirt poured in and screws set and had a really great time. There are things that I will just keep to myself and things that I will send to her family in a letter. But we had plenty of conversations, many of them following a cop on the block where I drove and we'd pull into the driveway and sit there for another thirty, forty-five minutes, having these conversations, some of which were, we need to talk, you may not agree with me, and then we go from there. But like Dan mentioned, it was never contentious. It wasn't argumentative. It wasn't disagreeable. It was a conversation. It was a conversation between two adults who respected one another. And no one was bitter at the end, and no one was the worse for wear. And we all learned something. And as I indicated to her, I willed her. I wanted her so much to just last a little longer because she had so much to give, so much more she could have given, and we got cheated. Sorry. So we move on to organizational business. According to our city charter, may I have a motion for the appointment of Dennis Marcos to the city council?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Blevins. Second by Mr. Schlack. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. That has carried. We will now have the swearing in.
All right, Mayor, council, audience, as our charter states that when a vacancy does occur at the next regular meeting, we shall appoint the next highest vote getter. So it is with my honor to present to you the next eight vote, highest vote getter, Dennis Marcos. And I will swear you in, sir, if you'd like to stand there. Raise your right hand. You do not have to repeat after me. Just at the end, say I swear, I do, or I affirm, whatever you feel most comfortable. All righty. Do you, Dennis Marcos, do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and that you will endeavor to secure and maintain an honest and efficient administration of the affairs of the city of Allen Park, free from partisan distinction or control, and that you will perform the duties of city councilmember to the best of your abilities? So help you God. Congratulations, sir. Was it called baptism by fire? Mr. Marcos, please join your place on the council.
I think we'll just take a brief moment here to welcome Mr. Marcos. I did that before the meeting, while I didn't say it in the last comments. Regardless of the circumstances, we are very happy that he is able to join us and take his seat on council. The next order of business is my appointment of Mayor Pro Tem Mr. Alali as the alternate on the Downriver Utility Wastewater Authority. May I have a motion for that appointment, please?
Motion, ma'am.
Motion by Mr. Schlack.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now we have the city administrators report.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Mayor, you may want to consider separating these two over on the side. I just, I just have a feeling. I'm just having a bad, I know, I'm having a bad feeling.
Speaking to the mic, okay, buddy.
Yes. First, I would say I'm very happy to be back. As some of you know, I was very ill last week, down and out. No rumor, truth to the rumor that the Rolling Stones concert did me in. That was still a good concert, but it wasn't from that. So, but I do want to say how much I appreciate the department heads that are sitting in the back of the room. Every single one of them stepped up and made sure that things did not get, no balls were dropped and anything like that. They are top notch, and once again, it was, I saw it in my own. They proved to me time and time again why I am so lucky to be able to work here in City of Allen Park with such fine people. And I really do appreciate all their efforts over the last week, so I do thank you all. Now you got to pick on one of them, but we'll figure that out later. He usually is Matt Baker, and I shouldn't do that because he's a really good guy. So, I know, it's hard to believe. I know, it's hard to believe too. So, all right. Just some quick updates on some projects we have going on here. The project that doesn't seem to end is the Sixteen Kilfoyle Bridge there at Dick's, Goddard, Old Goddard. I drove by. It looks like they have all the concrete poured now. They have all their warming blankets on. So I imagine that they're probably just a few days away from opening that up. As soon as it is, we will get that posted. But they did make some progress, and it looks like it will open up. I would imagine by the first of December, it should be open. And once that is, we'll post that out. For the street improvement projects, the Hanfor Avenue project, the GV Cement completed all the concrete that was necessary, work that was necessary to finish up on that, and they started laying sod today on that portion of the project. They hope to get that done tomorrow afternoon, as long as there's availability of sod. But they are in the process of doing that, and if it's not tomorrow, it'll be early next week when they're back from the holiday. With that, though, the Shenandoah project, which was the water main project, is now complete. Sod was installed today on that portion, and that is a completed project now. If you haven't had a chance, L's Asphalt did pave Park Street. It is a very nice, smooth ride over there as opposed to the potholes that I know their head on the way to the firefighter police officer's baseball game a few months ago. They still need to finish some work on the shoulder and restoration, and then Savon Cement will be in to pour the intersections, which will tie in the existing concrete areas to the asphalt area that was newly paved, but I guess it was not this past weekend, the weekend before, before, I guess, was the twelfth, the thirteenth, fourteenth, and that weekend. Millward Park parking lot, though, looks spectacular. That is all finished. It has been marked for pavement marking. If you notice a little bit different from what was before, there was an island in the middle before which had the drainage. It is now all asphalt, so everything will drain properly. And I think it'll be a lot easier for winter maintenance as well. If it needs to get plowed or anything like that, it'd be just a lot easier, especially being asphalt as opposed to the stone that was there for so many years. Holbrooke Roofing did finish the roof at the library. And then we also received yesterday the reports that they were out doing the survey that they're going to be looking at the roofs for us on a three-time-a-year basis. Looked at the reports with Tom and Matt, very happy with everything there. Sent them on to the department heads so they can see what's in, existed for their building. But basically, they, you know, went up there on the nine roofs that we have, made sure all the leaves were cleaned up, made sure all the debris was picked up, and then sent us pictures, before and after pictures, so we could see what was up and how it looks. And I think this is going to be well worth the twenty-two-hundred-and-fifty dollars every four months to do this. This is going to, I think this is going to save us a lot of money in the long run because we'll be on top of any issues, first and foremost. That has led us to have some discussion that we think we need to also do this with the HVAC systems. So I'm working with Matt, hopefully between the holidays, we'll be able to get something together, get that sent out, and bring that back forth to the council in a few months for something on that because we just see that this is going to be a benefit, a huge time saver for us, making sure that we're taking care of things. Because as you know, we did not do roofs very well around here for a lot of years. We have to step it up. So, the sanitary sewer repair at the historical house is complete. That was taken care of this past weekend, and there was a blockage there. We had one of the contractors that has been working with the water department for the lead service line trenching and so forth to work on that. And they did a spectacular job, and should be all good to go now. And I also met with Wayne County there today. They had a couple contractors that were coming through for a walkthrough to look at the facility, and those bids will be due here in early December. And so we just have to keep moving along. We'll get the proposals there and hopefully find out if we have some additional funding coming from Wayne County at the top of the hundred and four thousand dollars that we do have already been awarded. So I'll keep you up to date on that. And in your packet, I did put together a memo that was sent to the Historical Commission, kind of give them an update, and also kind of outline what we had discussed here two weeks ago. We need to make sure we're getting a plan together to get the materials out of there. That was one of the big questions from the painting contractor day was, will everything be out? And because it just makes a big difference on how they would price it and what they can be able to move around inside the facility. And there is a lot of stuff in there. So it's not going to be an easy task. Just a reminder here to accommodate the audit presentation by Plan Moran, the study session for December fourteenth will start at five fifteen as opposed to five thirty, and we'll again meet back in the back with the questions. You'll get a lot of that material beforehand and then be able to ask any questions of the audit team from Plan Moran as they do their presentation for you. The next edition of the Allen Park Today will be out early December. I have seen a sneak preview of that. It is another spectacular presentation. The department heads did a great job getting information to Angie Calabresi over there, the editor for us, and she put together some things, a nice article on Jim Perry and that he was received from the Sutherland County Regional Chamber of Commerce, and it just really touches a lot of aspects of the community once again. So really happy that that magazine has really succeeded with what we were trying to do, get the positive word out of what's going on here in the City of Allen Park. And just a reminder that we'll be closed here for Thursday, Friday for the Thanksgiving holiday. We'll also be closed for Christmas Eve, Christmas Day. That'll be observed on December twenty-third and twenty-fourth, and then we close for New Year's Eve, New Year's Day, and those will be observed on December thirtieth and December thirty-first. And just real quick here in the city hall, I got to thank you to, who do we have there? We had Darlene Swovland from our accounts payable. We had Emily Wallant from the Treasurers. We had Maureen Armstrong, the treasurer, and Matt Para from the city clerk's office. Did a great job getting everything decorated outside of here at city hall. Looked spectacular. They had some music playing earlier. I thought I was at the mall ready to get that spirit going. No pun intended for the mall over here, that's it, though. So, but listen, I could be Santa Claus at the mall, so I just got, I can't grow the beard, though. That's the problem I have. So, I want to, I like to, you know, surprise the department heads once in a while and bring them up so they all sit back here nervous and trying to figure out who's going to be. and trying to figure out who's gonna get called. But I'd like to see if Tom Murray can come up, and Tom, Tom, he gave me some information yesterday, which was actually good information. I don't want to take the, the credit.
But I just, Mr. Alali has to leave because...
So Tom passed on some good information that was actually very pleasant to hear on a Monday morning, and I think it's just important that he tell you what that news was himself, as opposed to me telling that.
Type of paper.
Absolutely.
So I got a call on Friday from our engineering department, C.E. Rains, who we contract, that they subcontract with Fishback FTCH. You've probably heard that name a couple times with organizations we use. We applied for a grant for Reek Road Bridge for a million dollars back in, I'm gonna say February. You have approved it earlier in the year, I know that much. We've been waiting all this time. This is the second time we applied for this grant in two years, and we received a million dollar grant to redo that in 2024. We have to put up about $300,000. That was our sweet pie that we put in, in the memo, if you recall. It was 5% match. I moved it to 20% to try to get us to get this. Instead of us paying $1.4 million, I'd rather just pay $400,000. So we received a billion dollars. This is the second, second bridge grant we've received. Earlier the year before, we received one for Southfield Service Drive for, I think, approximately $500,000 or $600,000. And this is the only two that the City of Allen Park is responsible for. So therefore, we will be getting them both done in '23 and '24, and it should be long before none of us have to worry about a bridge for a while, hopefully.
Very nice. Awesome. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
Just so we keep things in perspective. Approximately, what size is that bridge?
It's not big. It's, it's very small bridge. It's taller than it is longer. Oh, 75 feet, 60 feet, maybe, is the length of the bridge, but I'll bet it's 50 to 60 feet tall from the bottom of the Sexton, Sexton Kilfoyle, probably. Oh, a bridge is very expensive. I do know, and Mark can probably back me on this, Gibraltar's been going through several bridges over there. They have some in the $5 to $10 million range to just do small local bridges. Bridges are more expensive than any type of roadwork there is.
But just keeping in perspective is that
A million dollars is...
We're talking a million and a half.
Mm-hmm. And that's not a complete rebuild, just so you know. That is just a surface. There is one of the center beams out of the three pillars that you would say needs to be just resurfaced. It's not even a reconstruct. And putting gutters in there currently, it has holes for the way it was originally designed, and that's what scoured the pillars, is instead of gutters going down to the creek, it just scoured the pillars. That's the million and a half dollars, just doing that.
Wow. How long is this gonna expand its life, approximately?
About 25 to 30 years at least, minimum. I currently, because this bridge isn't such just, let me correct, they call it disrepair by standards, not disrepair by us driving over it. Okay, there's two standards. There's a state standard that they have, and then there's what you actually drive over. It can handle the traffic we have currently. It's not a problem. But because of the scouring I just told you about, we had to go from every two-year bridge inspection to an every-year bridge inspection for this bridge. The one that we got the grant for in 2023 to be taken care of on Southfield Service Drive is still on a two-year cycle. Two-year is a normal cycle in the state of Michigan, so that's nothing unusual.
Excellent. Awesome.
Okay.
It's in time for Christmas.
Yeah, some very good news on that. That's why I wanted Tom to share that with you. I think this will also change the load. We had to reduce the loading on this bridge a couple years ago, so we'll be able to get that back up to the, to the, what it was designed for at that time. This will be, I believe you said 20, it's fiscal year '24, so it will probably be sometime in the, it'll be '24, '25? '24, okay, so 2024. So we're still a couple years away, obviously. And as, as we get close to that, we'll let you know. That road's gonna be closed for that portion, so we will have to make, you know, changes to how we travel the city and stuff for us, so. But definitely some great news. And as the mayor points out, this is a small, this is not a major bridge, and you're still talking a million and a half dollars. And this is the problem that we have, not only here in Allen Park, in the Downriver area, the state of Michigan, but the entire country, is the bridges just need to be a focus for, for infrastructure repairs as we go forth. So just want to make sure we share that good news, and I think the approval on that was at the March meeting, March 23rd of this year. And I kind of recall a little bit on this topic was, I think Tom and, I think Sohail may have been here in the back first, but answering a lot of questions from Councilwoman Syke, as this was definitely right up her alley. So maybe the timing, maybe there's something to do with the timing. Always, you know, could be a moment there. So hopefully we have an angel watching over us for some other projects coming up as well.
I have a motion to approve the Administrator's report.
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Valerius.
Second.
By Mr. Lloyd. By Mr. Valerius.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions? Not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we come to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Anyone wishing to come up and make comment, please just give us your name and the street on which you live. Do not give us your full address, and you are limited to four minutes. Thank you.
Good evening. Nancy Nick, Cleveland Avenue. I just came up here on behalf of the Historical Commission. We wanted to thank Matt Doran and the DPS for putting up our lights on our Christmas tree, for the tree lighting. That was, they've done that a couple of years now for us, so thank you. And also for Tom Murray, who tonight showed me all about what was happening in the backyard, showed me pictures and keeping me updated on that. So Tom, I appreciate that. Everyone knows I was really good friends with Pam, and I wanted to thank Chief Egan and the Honor Guard, because that was one of Pam's wishes, that they were there at her funeral and at her viewing. And Chief Egan was on vacation, I understand, but he took the time out to be at the viewing and organize the police escort, which I was amazed at how that he put that together. And I know Pam was looking down and goes, hey, Nancy, was this the coolest thing of what? You know, they had the Brownstown Police, when Allen Park stopped, Brownstown picked up and stopped the traffic. And we almost beat the funeral director getting there because it was so fast, but. So thank you to the Honor Guards and to Chief Egan. It's greatly appreciated by her friends and her family. Thank you.
Ed Can, Fire Chief.
Thank you.
Mark, I was gonna send this to you, sir, but it just got finished. So it's breaking news, and it's good news. Toys for Tots is open at the fire station now. We had come up with last year through Sergeant Shook, a outdoor COVID-safe drop-off with very little contact. So it's right outside. You can come up. You don't even have to ring the bell unless you want to come and say aye, and drop off at those locations, and we'll pick it up daily, close it up, and then put fresh liners in underneath the tent, right next to the Dalmatian, next to the flagpole. You can pull right up on the ramp if you so desire. Wanted to let you know that all the donations we collect stay downriver and largely in the Allen Park area as well. There are forms available online, should there be a family in need for their children. And we are still, along with Chief Egan, at the Police Department finishing up Mimi's mission, her portion. She's got many charitable things going on. She's a wonderful woman, but in this case, the pajama drive. And so you can drop off brand-new pajamas from baby to adult for foster children in the Downriver area, and they will be delivered to them at Christmas. They have to be new and in a package, okay? Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else coming up, I will close the public comments section, and we will move on to the consent agenda tonight. We have two purchasing actions, claims and accounts in the payable report. May I have a motion?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Blevins. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Resolutions. The first resolution is to approve the Parks and Recreation Department to purchase one commercial X mark zero Ternex Series lawnmower in the amount of $10,719, and waive the formal bid process because there's no economic advantage with funds from account 10170793900 and 401 capital outlay. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Questions or comments?
I'd like to comment and say that in our study session, we went over the fact that we purchased one of these about, one a year, where we have about five in our holding, and they have, by understanding, a three-year warranty. Is there anything else to add that citizens might be aware of?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Resolution two is to approve HydroCorp's offer to extend the current contract for one more year until December 31st, 2022, with a 3% price increase in order to do our commercial and residential cross-connection program at a cost of $79,236. Perhaps Mr. Murray would come up and explain what this is. My understanding is that the last time this contract was extended, there was no price increase, and we haven't had one in several years.
Correct. This was originally a three-year contract back in 2017 or 18, and it had two-year options for 3% increases each year after, for two more years. Last year, they extended it with no price increase due to the pandemic. They felt at the time that's what they were doing. This time, they're offering to extend it as it is, at the 3% that was originally in that contract. I reached out to several communities around us and asked who they've had recently for bidding, and HydroCorp is the only one bidding on this kind of work anywhere in Downriver or Southeast Michigan. Same thing happened to us when we originally sent it out. I compared Dearborn's recent contract that they did get, because they put it up for bid. It's a five-year contract with a single price in the first year, 5% every year therefore after. So I felt a 3% was probably a very good deal for them to give to us, since we've had no increases, and we know costs go up for ourselves, let alone any contractor. So I thought to bring it to the body here and see if this is something you would like to enact.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Lloyd.
Second.
Second by Mr. Valerius. Any comments or questions? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Resolution three, to approve the DCC Brownfield sub-grant agreement for the Allen Park Theater.
Motion, Mayor.
Motion by Mr. Schleck.
Second.
Second by Mr. Lloyd. Questions or comments?
Can I ask what exactly that says?
Yes, we'll have Mr. Kibbe come up and explain that, since you were not at the work session. It might be of general interest also.
It's, it's, it's a rather confusing request here, but let me give a stab at it. As, explaining it earlier, the council was, earlier this year was asked to accept a grant from the DCC Brownfield Group for $110,000. $110,000 was to be for demolition, $10,000 for asbestos removal. At the same time, we also, the council accepted that grant, also asked for authorization to seek demolition bids, which we did. We ended up getting the, the low bid was awarded in August for $146,812, and then the, the net included Davis Bacon prevailing wages as, as part of the scope of, of the pricing and for the asbestos removal. The grant that the DCC had granted us came into question. We had a, an individual pass away at the DCC that was operating the program. A new person is taking it over. They raised a number of questions about the type of grant that we were supposed to be getting, that it didn't qual, that there was no really qualifications to, to, to grant that type of work, which would be for the demolition. When you're doing a project such as asbestos removal or some kind of contamination of the soil, you can use money, use that money to make the, you know, to facilitate the demolition, to get to the, what you need to clean up, but you have to have something there to clean up, and it has to be something substantial. In the case of the theater, we don't have anything that is under the ground to justify that, so the demolition is not an eligible expense under the, the criteria EPA set forth with the, with the funding that they have available. So we, so that person kind of basically tells us we're not eligible under those EPA rules, and we'll need to, to seek other ways to facilitate the demolition cost. But there is still the ability to apply for the asbestos removal portion of the project. And so we've done that. This grant will allow up to $85,000 for that asbestos removal and the facilitation of the hazardous material reports and the grant administration of the program itself to do this. So while it's not the perfect scenario, it'll still cover at least $30,000 or thereabouts, $28,000 to $32,000 of our $146,000 bid is for asbestos removal, and this will cover those costs. So that'll still leave us with a $115,000 or thereabouts amount remaining for the demolition that we'll have to come out of, as I think Amanda mentioned earlier, probably fund reserve to, to pay for the demolition at that point in time. So under this request here is that the DCC Brownfield is granting us these funds, but we need to accept the, the grant agreement with them. There's a 20% match, which will actually be made with our demolition, the cost of the actual demolition. And I would recommend, or ask council to approve this grant from the DCC EPA, or DCC Brownfield Group through the EPA for up to $85,000, but it needs to be subject to council, legal council's final approval. And I'll be meeting with him tomorrow to kind of go over all those details and make sure things worked out the way that he's satisfied, satisfied with those aspects. I apologize. That was a little bit different from what I gave you back in the back in the Cliff Notes version there.
You've been rehearsing.
You know, I, I tried to stand here, you know, I have confidence that I know what I'm talking about, so that's, I, I hope so. This, this one there, it's disappointing that, that we won't have the, the grant for demolition, but as I mentioned in the back, I'd rather know that now than to send something over to DCC seeking reimbursement, realize you didn't qualify, you know, by the way, nothing qualified. You, you don't get any money. So at least we'll get, get a portion of that money to cover those costs that we're gonna do. We have to do these asbestos abatement no matter what, and there's, there are requirements involved in dealing with the EPA in the state of Michigan that'll be done no matter what. So in this case, we'll have funding from the, from the grant to pay for it. So it's not a total, total loss, but not as good as it could have been.
Any other questions?
Yeah, so with this, this does change up our timeline a little bit from what we had anticipated, because we were anticipating seeing the building probably coming down between the Thanksgiving and the, and the Christmas time. We're gonna be delayed until probably the end of January to February, probably two to three months. And that's one of the requirements that we'll have, is once we get this agreement back to EPA and it's approved, there is a 30-day notification process that has to be taken into account as well. So just some hurdles to jump through, but I would imagine by spring, you know, the building will be completely down.
There's no other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Now we will move on to the regular council comments, and I put out a rotation, and we'll, we'll kind of stay with that, and we'll start with Mr. Schleck.
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'll start by saying thank you to all the great citizens that came out to enjoy the return of our Allen Park Holiday Christmas Parade. Truly one of the reasons I make Allen Park such a great place to live. I want to thank the Knights of Columbus, the Linus Club, the Elks Club, high school bands, and all other organizations that participated this year. And a very special thank you to Allen Park Fire Department, Police Department, Parks and Rec, DPS, Historical Commission, and Festivities Commission for a fantastic job for their dedication and their hard work. It truly showed, and it was a great event. I don't, I didn't hear one single complaint. I especially want to thank Mr. and Mrs. Claus. I mean, they made such a long trip from their old home, and hopefully they can return every year after the delay from last year. Secondly, I want to congratulate Allen Park Jack's Football Team. They had an amazing season. Unfortunately, ended a little sooner than they had hoped, but nonetheless, it was very memorable. Third, I want to wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving, and remember, if you read the label on your And remember, if you read the label on your turkey and said, "Single servant for one," you may have overdone it, so that can be the whole family. I also want to point out and observe, I will be observing Friday as Native American Heritage Day. Lastly, to you, Mr. Dennis Marcos, our newest council member. I promise you, as you start your journey on this council, it will be overwhelming. It will sometimes be outright evergating. You know, can't do more, but it will be rewarding. There's lots to learn. Stay with it, ask questions, and I really look forward to getting to know you and serving alongside you. So, welcome aboard. With that, Madam Mayor, I yield.
Thank you. Matthew?
Yeah, this Thursday, Thanksgiving, the forgotten holiday. It seems like as soon as Halloween decorations come down, Christmas decorations go up. The holiday that focuses on giving thanks for all that we have kind of gets overlooked, unfortunately. Each year at this time, I reflect on what I am thankful for. My wife, my son, my dad, my brothers, sisters, family, friends, and my dog, Bumblebee. I'm thankful for my health, my job as a teacher, our home, and this city. Again, thanks to our police officers, our firefighters, our department heads, our human resources director, our city attorney, our city clerk, city treasurer, finance director, city administrator, and every individual person who works for the city of Allen Park. I'm thankful to serve with my fellow council members and our mayor, and I'm thankful to every citizen of Allen Park for entrusting me to serve you. I'm thankful to live in the greatest country on earth and enjoy all the freedoms we take for granted each day. Again, thanks to everyone who has served and is serving this country in military service, because it is through their service and sacrifice that we have all that we have. Thursday is Thanksgiving, the day of thanks. Let us not reserve only one day to be thankful for all that we have, but celebrate each and every day with thanks and praise. God's blessings to everyone this Thanksgiving. I yield.
Thank you. Dan?
You know, it's funny. Thanksgiving and Fourth of July are my two favorite holidays of the year. And the reason that they are is Thanksgiving and Fourth of July are about coming together with your friends and your family, and that's really the main activity. It's food and it's fireworks too, but that's really kind of secondary to coming together and being, you know, it's not the presents, it's not, you know, the Easter egg hunt. It is a thing about connectiveness and thankfulness. And I am truly thankful for this community. Every time we suffer a tragedy, I kind of come back to this line from Ecclesiastes, where there's a time for everything under the sun. Time to be born, a time to die, a time to plant, and a time to uproot, a time to tear down, and a time to build. And it's all these things, it's a big, long list of all these things that we do together as a community. Time to laugh, a time to cry, a time to dance, you know? And I truly, I am truly thankful for this community, because as we've sat up here for these two years and for most of my life, we've gone through some very difficult things. We've made difficult decisions. We've done some pretty cool things, I like to think, some pretty amazing things, things we're celebrating. We've built bonds with each other. We've gone through these things, and we've done it together. And I'm thankful for the people that I have up here on this dais with me. I'm thankful for all of our department heads and Mark and Joe, who guide us through these decisions. And I'm thankful to our community members, who, when I run down the street, have no idea who I am. But they say hello nonetheless. And I'm very fortunate to have this community that we're able to do these things together. So on this day, you know, two days before, I say thank you. And I do say to our one lone Allen Park High School student, I am gonna be quizzing you on the DCC Brownfield sub-grant. So just, I hope that you got all that. Maybe you can get together with Mark afterwards and just take some notes. All right, but, no, but other than that, everybody have a very happy Thanksgiving, and I look forward to seeing you all in December.
Mr. Lally had to leave, but he left me some notes. Unfortunately, he had to leave because another individual he was very close to passed away. So this seems to be just ongoing. He wanted to congratulate Dennis for stepping up and coming on board. He wanted to let him know that he was sure that we would all work well together. He commented on our annual Christmas lighted parade and indicated it was one of the best we've ever had and well-attended, and the weather was great. And he wanted to thank everyone for their participation and those who helped organize it. And he wanted to wish everyone a happy and blessed Thanksgiving and reiterated that we have so much for which to be thankful. And he asked also that we keep in mind and say a prayer for all those who were affected by the tragedy that just occurred in Lakeisha, Wisconsin during their Christmas parade. And he wanted to say goodnight and God bless. So that's Tony's. He was afraid he wasn't going to be able to speak about Pam, but we managed to move that ahead. So now, Mr. Marcos, if you would like to make any comments?
Son? I'd first like to say, give my most sincere condolences to Pam, his family, friends, the city of Allen Park. Definitely extremely dedicated civil servant. She gave a lot. I didn't know her until we ran for the election a couple of years ago. Learned a lot from her. We talked quite a bit out in the parking lot from campaigning, and I realized how much knowledge she had and how much she was able to give to the city. So I've got big shoes to follow. And I will do my absolute best to try and film. I have a lot to learn, obviously. So I will give my utmost, take care of the people of Allen Park. And everybody have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Thank you.
Charles?
Interesting, switching seats. And I work in security, so it's like now I can see both doors now and all that stuff. So it's just, it's just one of those things, like whenever I'm like speaking with someone, then everyone's like, what are you looking at? And it's just a security thing where you're just always looking everywhere and all that stuff. But it's just, it's interesting. First off, welcome Dennis. Can't wait to see our next two years, so what we're bringing. And it's gonna be a fun time. It's like, you know, like the responsibility and everything. And it's just, I remember when we campaigned, we chatted a while, and it's just, I just can't wait. Thank you, Nancy and Chief Ed, coming up and speaking. And to Chief Chris and Brownstown and Flat Rock with their police escort and stuff. And Chris coming out in his vacation time helped that out. Literally, it was, Pam did, like, to me and Nancy was like, my, like, one of her one wishes was to have the escort thing, and it turned out great. Shout out to Rob and Kyle from Parks and Recs with the Christmas parade. I saw them running around, getting everything taken care of and stuff. And you guys already notice what you guys do every day. The Festivities Committee passing out hot dogs and water right before Santa. And then the Historical with the laying the tree. It was special for me as well, because that was my first as council member at a parade and all that stuff. Because last year, we didn't do it, and the year before, I wasn't on council. So it was, it was fun. It's one of those things where it's like, again, on the memory of like, Councilman Lloyd said about all the things that we do in the city. And I hope we keep on moving forward and having more things in our city. I did get in the mail update of our APCCF fund of this past year. And it was interesting to see that one of the highlights was they received $5,000 grant from DT to help fund an LED digital sign for the city. And these funds were granted for specific purposes, are held in restricted account in our budget. The city is researching sign replacements and need for signage at more than one location. Additional funding to complete this project will be required. So I can't wait to see, since I've been preaching that forever, I can't wait, hopefully, to see whenever that happens. Also, with decorating with City Hall, police station for the holidays, it's great to also see like the snowflakes down Allen Road and the decorations on Parker Avenue. Last year, I know I said, but I hope in the future, we can make funds or even it'll be a vacation committee or some, something where we can decorate E-course and the northern Allen Park on Allen Road. Just something, even it's tinsel around the poles, something, just because that is part of Allen Park too. And they should get some love as well during the holidays. Lastly, I want to say I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving. And also, next Monday, I hope everyone who celebrates Hanukkah has a good Hanukkah this year as well. Please be, think of others during these times. And like I always say, stay positive. And I'm always thankful for being up here representing the city every time I'm up here. And so, thank you. And hope all the residents have a great end of November. And I'll see you all in December. And with that, I yield. Thank you.
Mike, would you like to make any comments this evening?
I'd just like to say, may Pam, Councilwoman Cy, rest in peace. And I see Nancy Nick out in the crowd, and I just want to give you my condolences, because I've seen you and Pam around here for over a decade, and that's what it was to me, other than Pam and Nancy. It was almost synonymous. And then Charles would be close by. But he was a younger guy then. But my condolences, because I know she was a dear, dear friend to you. And I also know you lost your father right before that. So Nancy, I'm sorry. And you just know they're both in a better place. It's hard to switch from that to, hey, Dennis Marcos, congratulations. Again, unfortunately, that's the way it's all set up. But I do congratulate you. I was, I had the pleasure of only seeing your face maybe once or every once a month or every two months on Fire and Police. Now I gotta see it every twice a month, so. But it is good to have you. For those who don't know, he was on our Fire and Police Civil Service Commission. So he's not coming in just right out of nothing. So, but they say that 'cause of my fire. With that, I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. God bless you. Good night.
Thank you, Mike. I'll be brief, because I don't want to be redundant. I wore purple tonight because it's still November and it's still Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month. And I hope that I will remember to wear this every November while in the office. There are many thoughts that go through my mind. Many of them have already been stated by my fellow council members. Sometimes I get to be a very quiet person, and I just keep things to myself. But I do believe that when I came in, my feeling was that I may be mayor, but I am simply the team captain. And the rest of you are the team. And I think everyone here has made that very clear, is that we work together. We may not always agree. I don't throw my weight around. I listen to what's being said. And I hope that everyone continues to do that with one another, because that's what a team is, working together. And for Dennis, people will be willing to work with you, both on this council and throughout the city and the various departments. Everyone is available. Something inspirational will come to me. We know we will miss certain individuals. We know we will miss what they bring. But on the other hand, we each bring something different. New perspectives, new ideas, new thoughts. And for that, we will look forward. And I think Dan also made the comment, or Matt, or both of them. I look at Thanksgiving as one where I hope that no matter what has happened in our lives, we all have something for which we can be thankful, something for which we look forward to each and every day. Understanding that there are people who love us and care for us, and that there are people for whom we care and love. And I think that no matter how long we may know individuals, it has become very obvious to me that in two years, there was a great deal of caring and love. And with that, I call for adjournment.
Motion.
Second.
Mr. Blevins, Mr. Lloyd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 7:07. Thank you all, and have a wonderful Thanksgiving.